To call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order, can we start with the roll call?
Alberto Paratori.
Aziz Hassan.
Barbara Drummond.
Rocco Limetone.
Art Mahoney.
Thank you. Can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. Couple announcements. So there is not going to be a number one, but for those of you who have been following that item, it will be on next month. We're going to re-advertise it and make sure all the neighbors are aware that it's coming back. So the engineers are finally comfortable with the information that we've received. So it will be back next month, but there's no number one tonight, and there is no number nine tonight. All right? So those are the two changes to the agenda. I do want to remind board members that you are each required to get four hours of training each year, and Dutchess County Planning Federation does have some trainings coming up. There's one the fifth Monday, I think, of October, and then there's one in November. So if you can, one, I think, is even online. One's a webinar online. So just remember, you've got to get your four hours. You can actually get eight hours and cover next year if you want to, but just remember those four hours. Our next meetings are going to be Tuesday, October 24th, and Tuesday, November 21st. Pretty scary. We're talking about Thanksgiving already. We have one set of minutes to approve. There's a minutes from August 22nd that had some minor adjustments, amendments to them. I had some, Aziz had a couple amendments. So do I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended unless anybody else had any other amendments to the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good. So how it works tonight, folks, we have public hearings and then we have reviews. So public hearings are applications that this board has already reviewed. We've already had an opportunity to work with the applicants to understand what they're looking for, and then the neighbors get noticed. So we like to hear from neighbors if there are any issues that we're not aware of. Then the reviews are generally the first time that we're seeing applications. It gives this board an opportunity to kind of work through any of the issues, anything that we see that just doesn't, might not make sense. And then at the appropriate time, we'll schedule the review for a public hearing so that we can, again, notice your neighbors and make sure everybody's on board with it. So we do have number one, an adjourned public hearing. That was one we have previously opened. We're not going to hear that one, so we're going to go right to number two.
I was wondering, you're going to continue this appeal 4052?
It is going to be-
But again, you're going to re-advertise again?
Correct. Jackie will re-advertise. Our clerk will re-advertise so that the neighbors will be, neighbors are going to get new noticing?
Yes.
Yes. All right.
Is the applicant going to pay for the second advertising?
It's all in escrow.
They have an escrow.
Escrow, okay, then it's fine.
All right. So we told them upfront, we were going to, because this has been dragging on for too long, that we told them they would have to re-advertise, so they are definitely aware of that. But just in case any of the neighbors are watching this evening, that they can, are aware of that, and they don't have to wait for that notice. Any else?
I'm good.
Okay. So item number two, appeal 4069, Jessica DeRosa, 867 Route 376, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 126-foot front line, a 93-foot left side, a 61-foot right side, and a 9-foot rear line variance for an existing building for a doggy daycare, and an 82-foot rear line, 127-left side, and 101-foot right side variance for an existing fenced-in exercise pen pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Julie, you can figure out who opened it. Who first and second did it, okay? All I know is we're open. All right. Ms. DeRosa, we had an opportunity to hear you months and months ago. We had some issues, I think, with your survey, or, you know, and then you were getting married, so congratulations about that.
Thank you.
You have been operating a doggy daycare. You had been into us months, well, maybe even a year ago, actually, Hosner Mountain, when you came in with that one. And, you know, so we had, we've had an opportunity-
Yeah.
-to hear about your operation, and then that, for whatever reason, that site didn't work out. You came back. You are currently operating on a site on 376, 867, in the rear of a building. Okay? So you're on 376, but the furthest portion, large parking lot area there. There's actually a vacant lot next door as part of this site, and so you're operating from there with a penned fenced-in area. I made it known last time, but again, because this is a public hearing, we have to get stuff on the record. I walk by that site every single day, okay? Multiple times a day, because I'm walking from Brandy Lane down to CrossFit and back again, or to the rail trail, whatever. So I walk by that site. In the months and months since you've been before us, I've heard dogs once, barking once, okay? And I'm, folks, I walk by that site all hours of the day, okay? 9:30 at night, 7 o'clock in the morning, whatever. So I will tell you I don't hear dogs barking there, okay? So for whatever, you, you know, they're not necessarily outside at the hours, but, you know, I can tell you from my own experience that I'm not seeing that it's a nuisance, okay, or allowed operation at all. Lots of cars go in and out. Definitely people have dogs in their parking, in the parking areas, as they're picking them up and dropping them off. I have heard personally from people who just absolutely love the operation, because apparently you like interview families ahead of time and make sure the dogs are going to be a right fit, et cetera. One thing I want to be clear about, because again, the neighbors are entitled to know, when we asked you last time around the hours of operation, you told us that the hours of operation were going to be seven to seven. And I believe what you meant was that that was going to be when patrons would be allowed to stop in.
Correct. Yes. So we do keep dogs overnight more so summer, Christmas time, like those high seasons. We do have someone stay overnight at all times, so they can't be incessantly barking overnight without being attended. But hours of operation for people coming in during the week is seven to seven. Weekends are 8:30 to 6:30.
Okay. And consistently, there's not, there's not a dog there every night of the week?
No.
Okay. At your busiest, how many dogs are likely to be there overnight? I mean, think back to the summer oper, you operated this summer, so-
So I would say this summer, probably eight, when you got like a big, because we have like families that come in a pack of four. But usually, average, it's about two, three.
Okay.
Biggest, I would say, is probably going to be about eight.
And if there are dogs there overnight, there is a staff person there overnight as well?
Yes, at least one. Usually, when there's like eight dogs, we'll have two, just to make sure. And then those dogs stay in the farthest back end of the building to be farthest away from everybody.
Okay. The only other question I had was that in the last month or so, a pile of gravel or item four, or something appeared. Okay, again, I walk by that site, so I see things. And, and I know Jackie, when I saw that, I made sure Jackie knew. You're in the middle of a review. Note, we have to comment about environmental impacts, and so you can't make any changes to the site plan-
Gotcha.
...while we're in the midst of that. And you're also with the planning board as well, so, because you need site plan approval. So that pile of gravel can't, nothing can happen with it yet.
It's still there.
But it is for its purposes?
It's drain rock. Our backyard, since it's flat, we were having problems with like just the drainage and it running, so it was especially going towards our back door. So to eliminate the water going into the door, we were just going to dig that narrow way out that leads in and outside and put the drain rock there, so when the dogs go in and out, they're not running through a massive puddle and then coming back inside all dirty and crazy.
Okay, so it's for drainage?
Yeah, it's for drainage.
The other thing that we did talk about last time around was the fact that the fence, if somebody's really looking at it to the right side of the building, the fence back there is, it's like-
Oh, it's ugly.
It's ugly. It's black canvas, like hanging off of a fence.
Yes, so I did-
And it's like 100 feet back, so it's not, you know-
It's still noticeable.
But it is, well, for somebody who's, you know, goes by there regularly, you notice it. So you are going to do what about that fence?
So I've already talked to somebody who does planting and stuff, so, you know, once we're able to start making changes and stuff, we'll bring that person out on the outskirts of the fence, anywhere that's visible to neighbors or the roads. They'll plant tall shrubs that grow nicely. They're yearly, so they don't die, they don't get all gross. And then we'll have just like a nice floral kind of look instead of the black mesh and chain link.
I mean, you don't have to block the whole thing, just sporadically?
Yeah, just like sporadically, just to make it look nice.
Just make sure they're not deer candy, you know, that-
Yeah.
Something that's deer resistant, because-
Okay.
But again, that's a site plan issue, but plants absorb noise as well. So in the event that, you know, anybody has concerns about barking or anything like that, understanding that there will be some landscaping installed helps to address some noise. So comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
Good.
Okay. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Jessica DeRosa, 867 Route 376, Hopewell Junction, requesting a lot of variances? 126-foot front line, 93-foot left side, 61-foot right side, and 9-foot rear line variance for an existing building for a doggy daycare, and an 82-foot rear line, 127-foot left side, 101-foot right side variance for an existing fenced-in exercise pen. I need to note, by the way, what we, what the standards here are not for a regular business operation. We're actually holding you to the kennel standards. I know you're not breeding dogs there or anything like that, but we're holding you to the kennel standards, just in case anybody's wondering, you know, that's where these variances, that's why they're so large, because they're, a kennel calls for generally a larger. So-
I have a question.
For-
Is the storage pods still on site?
Yes, that is not ours, but it is there.
Okay. So that belongs to the law firm?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know what their plans are? Because it's been there, geez, almost a year.
I'm not sure. I think they have office files in it, I believe. I know they started to like pull stuff out of the attic, and I think they were putting it in there, but I'm not 100% sure.
All right.
Okay.
That was my question.
Are the two lots going to be combined into one?
Already were.
They were already?
Yep.
Okay, because the survey is indicating that they're separate lots.
Yeah, they were, they were combined.
Okay. All right. That's helpful. Good. Okay. So is anybody wishes to speak for or against this application? Seeing, okay, hold on. We can't close this public hearing. We need the planning board to act. Did we get notice from the planning board? Okay. So this requires a site plan approval. So the planning board, we encouraged them at our last meeting, we encouraged the planning board to do a coordinated review, so they actually had to circulate for lead agency. So at last, at their meeting last week, they circulated for lead agency. So we need to take a motion to allow the planning board to be lead agency for the site plan and for the reviews, because we shouldn't be looking at one piece of it and they look at another.
Right.
So do I have a motion to allow the planning board to be the lead agency for this application?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So we need now the planning board to actually declare themselves to be lead agency, and then we can-
Okay, and that's the paper. Okay, so I have the paperwork. That's already started.
We can't close this public hearing, because there could be comments that come up as the planning board start, does their review. You've submitted what you need to do to the planning board, right?
I just went over it with Jackie, so I'm going to get the copies this week and submit it this week.
Okay, good. So, so that with that, can I have a motion to adjourn this to next month's meeting?
So moved.
Sasha.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You, too. Lead agency, okay. All right. Item number three, appeal 4079, Vladimir Konzelko, 18 Kent Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 22-foot sideline variance for a proposed 25-by-16 or 400-square-foot detached garage, five, a 5-foot sideline variance for an existing air conditioner condenser, and the dwelling, a 5-foot variance for a proposed covered front porch, and a 3-foot rear line variance for an existing shed pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
So we had the chance to review your application with you last month. There is an existing house with the existing air conditioning compressor that we're just going to clean that up, okay? You are proposing to add a covered front porch to the front of your house, so, you know, I think from an aesthetic perspective, we were fine with that. There's a shed in the back-
Yes.
-that you wanted to keep, or we said potentially-
Yeah, for now.
Yeah, we said, let's give you the variance in case you wanted to replace it, but you said what was actually in the shed was going to go into the garage, I think is-
Yes, eventually.
But, and so what you're proposing is a 400-square-foot garage or 25-foot by 16 feet. The 16 feet, you really can't shrink. We talked about, you could likely shrink it to 12 feet, but because it gives you more storage inside, by shrinking it, the 16 feet is where you'd gain from the variances, but you're not going to gain anything significant. So that's why we kind of worked through this already and made, figured out that this kind of makes sense. The finish to the garage is going to be the same as your house?
Same. It's going to be a Hardy Becker siding.
Okay.
Like cement board siding, and a PVC trim board. It's going to be exactly the same, same color.
And how high is it going to be, the garage?
8-foot walls.
Okay, so it's one story?
Yeah, it's one story.
There's no storage? There's no residential use in here? There's no-
One story and a roof, six pitch.
That's fine. Okay. Comments or questions from board members? I think I got most everything in on that one.
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good as well. No questions?
I have not.
Okay. So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Vladimir Konzelko, 18 Kent Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 22-foot sideline variance for a proposed 25-foot by 16-foot or 400-square-foot detached garage, a 5-foot sideline variance for an existing air conditioner compressor, condenser, and dwelling, and a 5-foot variance for a proposed covered front porch, and a 3-foot rear line variance for an existing shed? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is appeal number 4079. Applicant is Vladimir Konzelko, requesting a 22-feet sideline variance from the requirement of section 194-107 of the town code, and the schedule of bulk regulations for a proposed 25-feet-by-16-foot, 400-square-foot detached garage, to a 5-foot sideline variance from the requirement of the schedule of bulk regulations for an existing air conditioning condenser and dwelling, a 3, a 5-foot front line variance from the section 194-94 of the town code, and the schedule of the bulk regulations for a proposed covered front porch, and 4, a 3-foot rear line variance from the requirement of section 194-107, and the schedule of bulk regulations for an existing shed, the variances. A resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan, whereas the property is undersized for an R1 zone, and it was built in the 1960s, and whereas many of the neighbors' properties are also undersized, and whereas the property currently does not contain a garage, and whereas the proposed garage would be used for additional storage, and whereas the proposed covered front porch would protrude into the front yard less than, less than homes on neighboring properties, and whereas this is a type 2 action recicra, and no further reviews required, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on September 26, 2023, and whereas a legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on September 20, 2023, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature, the desired result could not be achieved by any other means due to the size of the property. The variances could be deemed substantial, but the applicant lacks viable alternative given the layout of the lot. Their variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request from Vladimir Konzelko for 1, a 22-feet sideline variance from the requirement of section 194-107 of the town code, and the schedule of bulk regulations for a proposed 25-foot by 16-feet, 400-square-foot detached garage, 2, a 5-foot sideline variance from the requirement of this schedule of bulk regulations for an existing air conditioning condenser and dwelling, 3, a 5-foot front line variance from the section 194-94 of the town code, and the schedule of bulk regulations for a proposed covered front porch, and 4, a 3-foot rear line variance from the requirement of section 194-107, and the schedule of bulk regulations for an existing shed. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with a town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows. Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Alberto?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries. You're all set with us, but now you'll deal with the building department.
Okay.
Okay?
Congratulations.
Have a good evening. All right. Item number four, appeal 4080, Timothy Williams, 535 Route 376, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 2-foot sideline variance and a 20-foot rear line variance for a proposed 24-foot by 16 or 384-square-foot first floor and 336-square-foot second floor, total of 200, 720 square feet, two-story detached garage, 11 and 11-foot sideline variance for the existing dwelling, and a 25-foot front line variance for an existing front-covered porch, and a 6% lot coverage variance pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, folks, when we saw this last month, there were additional variances that were noted on the plan, but we didn't catch them. So that's why this is more than you would have seen last month. The lot coverage being one. It exceeds the percentage of what's allowed because the garage is, these are small lots. Again, it's on 376 Bridge Street over there by the, right over by the rail trail opposite.
It's about two houses up the rail trail.
The gun club there. So it is visible-
It is.
-briefly from route, from the rail trail, not, not much. I-
No, quickly.
Actually happened to walk by and saw the sign. I was like, oh, that's where the house is. There is a garage in the back there that I hope is coming out. Essentially-
That's what's coming down and replacing with the-
That's what you said, it's, well, not you, but what Brian told us was that the, they're going to line up the one end of the garage or something with that what's there now?
Yes.
That's in horrible shape.
It is.
And it's not in-
It's not a nice color.
It's not a nice color. Thank you.
Oh, no, no. We're definitely looking to clean it up and-
It's like an orange color. It's just like, ooh.
Definitely looking to clean it up and, you know, replace it with the same Hardy board siding that matched the house that he just did, same PVC trim all around. He wants to clean it up.
Is this a two-family house here, or is it a single-family use?
It's a single-family house.
All right. We just need to be clear. And the garage is not going to have any residential use. I mean, it's not very large on the second floor?
No, the, the original house doesn't have very many closets, so the owner would like to use the upstairs for storage.
Yeah, I think he mentioned like seasonal storage or something like that to us.
Just seasonal storage, yep.
But again, just to be, just to be clear, and again, as many of you know, on Bridge Street, the homes are very close to the road, 376 there, so it's, we realized that the front porch needed to be, we should just clean up that, even though we don't even know when the house was built, a long time ago. All right. So any other comments or questions from board members?
Yeah, I did a site visit, and I agree with the chair, and the house needs some renovation, some-
And that garage was just awful. The shed, whatever you want to call it back there.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I'm happy that the current owner or future owner, whatever, they're working on improving their location, and, and, yeah, so I have no problem with any of the issues that have been raised in the variances.
Any other board members?
No.
If not, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Timothy Williams, 535 Route 376, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 2-foot sideline variance and a 20-foot rear line variance for a proposed 24-foot by 16-foot first floor and a 336-square-foot second floor, two-story detached garage, an 11-foot sideline variance for the existing dwelling, and a 25-foot front line variance for the existing front-covered porch, and a 6-foot lot percent lot coverage variance?
I do have concerns.
Sure. Yeah, if we don't mind, if we can come to the microphone, there's, should be a clipboard there for you to sign your name, just so we have it right for the minutes.
Sure. Thank you. My concern is-
If you don't mind if we could speak to the, at the microphone, that's all.
My concern is the, the work being completed, because he has a habit of starting work, and he doesn't finish it. And it's an eyesore to look at. We're right to the left at 537, and the house is not finished. He has siding, and he ripped off only three-quarters of the house and the backyard. You know, the back of the house is not completed. They ripped off all the siding and didn't do anything.
Yeah, I noticed that.
So this is an eyesore for us to look at. So I do have concerns about him actually completing the work.
Okay.
So I don't know, is there anything in the town where like, there's a time limit in this work to be completed?
So a building permit has a deadline. However, somebody can extend that building permit.
And even renew it a year from now.
Right. Yeah, infinitum.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's no timeline.
So we could be looking at this eyesore for quite some time, then.
Well, all right. Hold on. Is there anything else you want to ask or comment on?
No, I guess we're okay.
I mean, we'll answer. If you want to come back up, you're welcome to. But before I have the professional from D.A.S.T.C.O.Z.A., I just want to be sure.
The owner did mention that he was going to have a contractor friend actually help him do this. It's not going to be just himself, which I think he originally was doing all the siding himself when he had time. This will be a friend of his going to be coming over and getting it constructed, so it should not be a long process. I can make sure he-
This is the second house in from the rail trail, so it's very visible.
Oh, yes.
You know, lots and lots of people pass by it. So not just the neighbor, but really anybody looking at this, it does not give a good impression of what the building department allows in the town and stuff.
That's what we've been told. So I can make sure that, you know-
I mean, that's who did the work on the siding, was his friends, so-
Hold on, hold on. I'm sorry. We need to have you back on the microphone. I'm sorry.
Got to put you to center stage.
No, stop.
My concern is that this is who did the work with the siding. He hires his friends to do work, and then they stop because he can't, you know, move forward. So we end up looking at the piles of garbage and, you know, all the debris, and it's never completed. So that's, I just want that concern out there.
No, I, I agree with you. If I was a neighbor, I would have equal concerns. So how do we get the owner's attention to this? Because again, we don't want him to start another project and stop halfway and not finish it.
No, I wouldn't want to see that either. You know, I drive by there frequently, and I wouldn't want to continually see a project that we started not finished. I don't know if there's a way, do we put it as part of the conditional approval? I mean, I don't know how-
It wouldn't hold up, but, you know.
I know. I can plead to him to get it done, but I don't know how far I can push that either.
When is he likely to start this?
He wants to start as soon as possible. He'd like to get it started.
Has he already like laid out the pad there?
I don't know that he can, because the original garage is down.
Because the garage, okay.
Yeah. He doesn't, he wants to start taking that down. And I know from the last, I was told, he has people lined up to do this.
Okay. And then when's he going to finish his existing house, though?
I would imagine he would do it congruently with, you know, finishing the garage. We can, we can make, you know, I can make a plea to him and say, you know, if you're doing this and carry on and make sure the house is complete as well. I'm not sure if there's something the board can-
Hold on one second. Matt, are there existing open building permits on this house? I don't have your report in front of me here.
Not currently.
I mean, he's working, I mean, the owner is working on, I mean, he's just changing the siding.
He's replacing the siding, yeah.
Just the detached garage.
Well, he's torn down the siding.
Yeah, that was-
Which does not, does it require a permit?
Yeah, it does, and he never pulled one.
Okay, so then he's in violation.
So he's in violation.
Yep.
So we can't go forward.
We're not going to grant an approval if he's-
He would need a demo permit for the garage when he starts that as well.
Okay, so if he has those violations, then we have an issue.
Because that was a big concern. Our houses are old, and I was, he pulled the siding down himself and his friends, and I was concerned about asbestos.
How long ago, do you know?
He's, it's been a couple years. It's been about two years, but he does one side of his house at a time, and I'm concerned about the asbestos, because those are old. I mean, it even looked concerning when he pulled it down.
So for two years, there's been no siding?
In the back, he pulled maybe about a year ago, nine months ago, and he hasn't. And there was siding, mismatched siding on all, he's got the front is now new siding, and the two sides are new siding. But the back has been about nine months to a year, where he ripped the siding down and left it. And he did the same thing. He took his time. He would rip the siding down, wait a couple of months, and then he would do the siding, He would rip the siding down, wait a couple of months, and then he would do the siding, the new siding. And that's my concern, that this is what's going to happen again.
All right. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Technically, there's not an outstanding violation because the building department hasn't issued one. But that said, I think we should make him pull a permit for the siding to show good faith that he's going to continue and it also then gives him a theoretical deadline to finish the siding. So.
He's asking for.
No, I know, I know. I think we hold on to this until we make sure he's pulled a permit on the siding before the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And then again, he shows good faith that he's going to do this in a timely manner. Maybe even you bring him next month and, you know. But that's one way to hold his feet to the fire. Uh, and I, I think it's important for him to hear that his neighbors are concerned about his, what everybody looks at.
Got it.
Okay? I mean, like I said, from the rail trail, I could see it. It was not finished and, but.
Yeah, I saw the same thing. Um, so what, so are you going to continue?
I need to see if there's any other comments from neighbors first. Anybody else wish to comment on this one? That's why it's important for neighbors to come out, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, all right. So do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing to next month?
So moved.
So.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
All right. So you will speak to your client.
Absolutely.
You don't have to come next month. You're welcome to, of course, but.
Yeah, thank you actually.
No problem. All right. Thank you.
Good board. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Item number five, Appeal 4081 Christopher Dursey, 10 Fishkill Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 49-foot rear line variance for a proposed air conditioning condenser pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is the house all the way at the end of Fishkill Road at 50, at 82.
Yeah.
You've got the rail tracks behind you.
Yeah.
It's a very, very narrow lot, okay?
Long, yeah.
You have nothing, you have almost, I mean, you have, you have blank space because it's, you know, the rail tracks behind you.
It's only about 30 feet with the house in the middle and an embankment down to the road and an embankment down to the tracks behind it.
So there's no other place to put this condenser, you know? We talked about this last month when we, when they had the opportunity to review it, but with the rail tracks and you're not impacting anybody behind you, nobody's going to see it anyway because the, you know.
Yeah, we'd like to put it on the side where you can't see it from anywhere really, as, as little as possible.
Comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Christopher Dursey, 10 Fishkill Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 49-foot rear line variance for a proposed air conditioning condenser? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appeal number 4081, applicant Christopher Dursey, uh, project, a 49-foot rear line variance from the schedule of bulk regulations for a proposed air conditioning condenser. Location is 10 Fishkill Road, Hopewell Junction. Excuse me, text map number 65, 6457 dash 03 dash 029470, district R1. Resolution offered by Al Paratori. Whereas the applicant has an extremely long and thin lot and whereas the property runs parallel to Fishkill Road throughout its entire length and whereas due to layout of the property, anything added would require a variance and whereas the rear of the property is bordered by a wooded area, whereas this is a type two action under SECRA, no further review is required and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on September 26, 2023 and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on September 20th, 2023 and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature, the desired result can be achieved by other, cannot be achieved by other means due to the layout of the property. The variance could be deemed substantial, but the applicant lacks viable alternatives given the layout of the lot. The variance will not have an adverse effect or, or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request from Christopher, Christopher Dursey for a 49-foot rear line variance from the schedule of bulk regulations for a proposed air conditioning condenser. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or a duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Your second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
Alberto.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries.
Thank you.
All right.
Good evening.
Have a good evening.
Good night now.
Okay. Item number six, Appeal 4082 Silva and Antonio Malacar, 4 Candy Lane, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 23-foot front line variance for a proposed front covered porch in addition pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
So Candy Lane, you are behind the CVS Plaza, okay? What you are proposing to do is put a front porch across the entire front of your home. There's one corner where there would be a gap, so you're proposing a little addition there to kind of give you a little bit more living space there. And then you're proposing a kind of weird cutout in the back of your house, so you're proposing a, an addition in the back, some additional space in the back as well. No additional bathroom, no additional bedrooms in here, right? You're just, I think it was a powder room was one of the additions, yeah. So we're really just cleaning this up in terms of what you need. Yeah, well, it's actually, it's for the front covered porch itself, so, but I think this is in line with pretty much other homes on that street. Um, is it going to be closer to the road than?
Not really.
Not really.
I mean, there's already, so there's already like a little bit of a covered arch, like doorway, which it's, it would just be extended across the rest of the, front of the house.
Yeah. But again, the homes there are all fairly close to the.
Yeah.
Street over there as, as you go down, so. Comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
Good. Nothing for you.
The shed on the side is.
That has a variance.
That what?
That has a variance.
Okay, good. Just making sure.
You still have the mini storage on site?
Yes.
Is that, what is the plan for that? Is that going into this or is it materials for the addition?
So the house is very small on the inside, so when we're doing like renovations on the inside, just somewhere to put some stuff.
But the question is, how long is that going to stay there?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that question. Oh, just a few months until everything is completed.
Okay.
Because there is a limit on how long temporary storage can be.
It should be three to four months, you know? And that's, that's what we tend to find is.
They overstay their welcome.
They overstay their welcome. They end up being permanent rather than a shed or a garage.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll be sure that we're, take care of it.
I mean, is, is, you're doing active renovations? It's acceptable, but it's pretty much as soon as you're done.
Yeah, no, it's not. It's, we're not meaning to keep that in there.
And particularly neighbors don't necessarily like to see storage pods in there, in your yards, so.
Understood, of course.
All right. Sorry. Comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Silva and Antonio Malacar for Candy Lane, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 23-foot front line variance for a proposed front covered porch in addition? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is appeal number 4082. The applicants are Silva and Antonio Mac, Malacar. For a 23-foot front line variance from the schedule of bulk regulations and section 194 dash 94 of the town code for a proposed front covered porch in addition located at 4 Candy Lane in Hopewell Junction, zoning district is R1. Resolutions be off, being offered by zoning board member Rocco Lametoni. Whereas the applicant is located on an undersized lot for a zoning district and whereas the front of the house is a similar distance from the road as the neighboring properties and whereas the applicant is seeking to use the proposed new area for kitchen and patio and whereas the new construction will use the same siding as the remainder of the house and whereas this is a type two action under SECRA and no further review is required. And whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on September 26, 2023 and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on September 20th, 2023. And whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the front of the house is similar to the neighboring properties. The desired result cannot be achieved by other means due to the layout of the property. The variance could be deemed substantial, but the applicant lacks viable alternatives given the size of the lot. The variance will not have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request from Silva and Antonio Maclar for a 23-foot front line variance from the schedule of bulk regulations and section 194 dash 94 of the town code for a proposed front covered porch in addition. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
Alberto.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So you guys are all set? Now you just deal with the building department.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. Item number seven, Appeal 4083 Susan Watkis, 21 Zerner Boulevard, Hopewell Junction, requesting a three-foot sideline variance for a proposed two-story attached garage with living space above pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
And you are Jason?
I am Jason Littich from J.L. Architecture.
Okay. All right. So we did have an opportunity to review this last month. What she's proposing is to put it in a garage on with a second story that would be connected through a breezeway, but essentially it would allow her to do a, like a bedroom suite kind of thing.
Correct.
So, and what she would do is, because she's not changing her subject, she said she would give up one of her existing bedrooms, make it into like a den or, you know, more living space, but not use it as a bedroom.
Correct.
So she's not going to change her number of bedroom, her bedroom count will remain the same, but this will allow her to have additional space and kind of like a suite for the bedroom. Finish on this is going to be the same as the house?
Yes. So we're proposing to actually change the siding as well, so to make everything match.
So you're going to update the siding on the whole house? Okay. And you're going to finish it in one fell swoop? You're not going to take three years to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Just, just making sure. You never know, so. Comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Good.
So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Susan Watkis, 21 Zerner Boulevard, Hopewell Junction, requesting a three-foot sideline variance for a proposed two-story attached garage with living space? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
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 Art Stern?
Yep. Appeal number 4083, applicant Susan Watkis, requesting a three-foot sideline variance from the schedule of bulk regulations for a proposed two-story attached garage with living space above at 21 Zerner Boulevard, Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member Art Mahoney. Whereas the applicant seeks additional garage space for storage and living space above to make renovations to her home and whereas this is a type two action under SECRA and no further review is required and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on September 26, 2023 and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on September 20th, 2023 and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature, the desired result could not be achieved by other means due to the layout of the property. The variance is not substantial. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request from Susan Watkis for a three-foot sideline variance from the schedule of bulk regulations for a proposed two-story attached garage with living space above. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
Alberto.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries. You're all set. Now you just deal with the building department.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good evening.
You too.
And our last public hearing of the evening, item number eight, Appeal 4084 Fausto Macau. I hope I'm saying that right. 271 Oak Ridge Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 280 square foot size variance for an existing accessory unit larger than 1,000 square feet pursuant to section, to chapter 194 dash 91 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we had an opportunity to talk to you about this one last month.
Yep.
It's an existing, essentially two-family house. It's an existing, essentially two-family house. This accessory apartment has been existing, you've been taxed as a two-family unit, it's time to clean it up.
Yeah.
And so you want to continue, it's a two-bedroom unit, so it's not really exceeding, it's not, you know, it's not extremely large, it's just physically it has larger space than what the code now allows.
Yeah.
But the unit existed before the code for accessory apartments actually
Yep.
came. And so nothing is really going to change, you're going to continue its use as it has been.
Yeah, the only thing I got to change is the windows. So I got to put egress windows and that's it.
Okay, that's fine. Comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to the request of Fausto? Say your last name for me.
Macau.
Macau, thank you. 271 Oak Ridge Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 280-square foot size variance for an existing accessory unit larger than 1,000 square feet. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is appeal number 4084, applicant is Fausto McCow, requesting a 280-square foot variance from the requirement of section 194-91 of the Town Code for an existing accessory apartment larger than 1,000 square foot. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Anson, whereas historically the property has had an accessory apartment, and whereas the property is classified in the assessment records of the town as a two-family home, and whereas the applicant applied to the town for permits to legalize the historical use, and whereas this is a type 2 action under SECRA, and no further review is required, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on September 26, 2023, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on September 20th, 2023, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as the property has historically had an accessory apartment, the desired result could not be achieved by other means due to the layout of the existing structure, the variance is, the variance is not substantial, the variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request from Fausto McCow for a 280-square foot variance from the requirement of section 194-91 of the Town Code for an existing accessory apartment larger than 1,000 square foot. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows: Aziz.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
Alberto.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Matt, he's already dealing with the building department?
Um...
Because of the egress issues?
He will go back, she will go back now.
Okay.
To the building department, and if he doesn't have a permit for the windows, he will need one.
Okay. All right. So you're okay with us, now you just go back and deal with the building department.
Got it. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Have a good evening. All right. That's it for public hearings. Public hearings run well because we take the time to review your applications, okay? So there are two applications left before us, there's no number nine tonight, so number 10 is Appeal 4085, Matthew Palladino, 42 Julie Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting an 18-foot sideline variance for a proposed 28-foot by 14-foot or 392 square feet detached garage pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. So take us through, you are not Matthew.
I am not. I apologize, I am Matt's wife, Nicole Palladino.
Okay, that's fine, no problem.
Matt could not be here. He submitted all the information to the building inspector, he's just looking to get, to put up a detached garage.
So 28 feet by 14 feet, is it one bay or two bays?
One.
One, so it's not very deep. 14 feet isn't deep enough for a car.
No, it's like, it's just for storage.
So this is basically a shed with a garage door.
Oh, got it.
Treated as a detached garage.
Got it. So it's really for storage more than for vehicles?
Correct.
Okay. What's the finish of it going to be? Is it going to match your house?
Yes.
Or at least complement your house?
Yes.
Okay. Is this visible from your neighbors?
Not really.
Is there trees? There's your screening and stuff there?
Yeah.
Okay. And the screening is on your side or is it on your neighbor's property?
I believe it's on our side.
All three sides of the backyard.
Okay.
There's photos in your packet.
There's not. I think you emailed them to me, and, yeah, please? Yeah, I don't have the packet this time. Lots of natural trees screen the rear yard of the site, no visible violations.
And I closed out...
There's an expired permit for this...
I closed out the generator
Okay, good.
While I was there.
Go ahead.
This is proposed shed, and then a proposed shed, they have got two different dimensions here, what's going on?
So...
Canopy to be removed.
This, the proposed shed is what we're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. There, its use is more like a shed for storage of materials, but because of the garage door on it, it's, we have to call it a garage. What's the floor of it going to be?
Not sure.
Okay.
It might be in my packet after the photos.
These tells of structure attached. Yeah, you've got a lot of trees. Have you talked with your neighbor about this?
Yes.
Okay. And they, no concerns?
It has a canopy, what is that canopy, existing canopy?
You wrote.
It says canopy to be removed. Did you see anything up there? Because...
It's always got my packet.
Was there some kind of like azeebo or something back there? Was there some kind of, something back there?
Is that on the survey?
Yes.
It's on the survey, yeah.
On survey, there are three things. There is a...
It's on the survey, but it's not in your pictures.
Yeah, there...
When is this survey from?
It has a block wall up there, can, canopy...
Yeah, the block wall goes around a tree, I see that in his pictures.
Canopy, canopy, canopy to be removed.
It's probably already removed.
And has a canopy, five foot, five inches canopy, then proposed shed, and then another proposed shed with the different dimensions, so there are two proposed sheds there.
They're only doing...
The only thing that I can think of, the five by five is where we store like firewood.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
That's the only thing that I can think of.
It's like a, like, it's a lean-to without a back wall.
Yeah, exactly.
So it's just a covered area that they probably store, because it's right next to where your firewood is.
Yeah.
But this is the stone wall.
But they're giving two different dimensions, proposed shed and proposed shed, two different dimensions. It has one proposed shed and then one proposed shed.
So do you know which is your shed?
I, I really don't.
Should be 28 by 14.
Just so you guys can see from Matt's photos, this is that canopy they were talking about, and then this is the stone wall.
This, no, this is...
I think on the left where it says proposed shed, seven point eight four feet, that's the variance they're looking for.
Oh, you think it's a shed?
That's, that's the variance dimension.
That's the variance that's needed.
Good point.
Oh, okay. A unique way to...
Yeah, it's not, like, usually the line on a survey connects from this property line to the shed and then gives us a dimension, in this case it's an arrow, curved arrow off to the side, kind of pointing in that general direction.
Because of variance, because, okay, no problem. I'm good. I just need to understand what's going on.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Just be prepared with what the finish is going to be next time.
Sure.
Again, if it's going to match the house, complement the house, whatever it is.
It will definitely complement our house.
Yeah, you have a nice property here, so.
Yeah, but I don't have an issue. I have all these markings up here, like...
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good.
All right. Motion advertised from Aziz, a second.
Motion advertised.
Second from Rocco, and...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good. So we will see you next month. Jackie will give you your information, because you got to put a sign in the front of your yard.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep. Okay. And last but not least, item number 11, Appeal 4086, Robert Coulter, 89 Townsend Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 450-size, square foot size variance for a proposed 40-foot by 30-foot or 1,200-square-foot detached garage pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. The footprints of the existing house is 1,200 square feet. So you are proposing a garage that is as large as your house.
I have a lot of cars.
Explain yourself, please.
Yeah, it's for classic cars, basically.
Okay. Can you pass that to Matt? How many cars are you proposing to store in there?
Well, we had four and we just downsized to this house, not our other house. We had four plus her car and...
She better be able to park her garage, her car in a garage.
It's going to be snowing soon.
So, yeah.
I have a three-car garage at my house and there's only one car. If it's in, it's mine, so I get that.
Anyway, yeah, I usually have three cars, you know, she has a little hot rod too, and I have, I have two little hot rods and, so, yeah, sometimes I have four cars, sometimes three. I don't buy and sell cars, but when we were downsizing here, we sold two, because we knew we were downsizing, but, so we're down to two classic cars right now.
And it's worse, the little house with the big rod.
I, just, really quick story, my, my youngest brother lived out, about an hour outside of Indianapolis, he had a two-bedroom house and a nine-car garage.
Oh, that's what I, that's what I want.
I get it, all right.
That's what we downsized.
This is not Indianapolis, so this is, you know, a little bit different.
Been there.
Have you spoken with your neighbors?
My only neighbor is my nephew, and he's got a classic car too.
He's all for it.
And he's all for it, because he's hoping to put his in the garage.
Okay, motion to advertise.
His is in his garage.
What's it going to look like? Is there going to be, it's just one story, is it going to be a second story to it?
Oh, one story.
One story, is it going to match your house?
It'll be nice.
Yeah.
It'll be nice?
Yeah, yeah.
Come on, it'll be...
Well, I was, I'm leaning towards the metal building because it's quicker and faster, but she likes wood, so we...
This is a large building to be metal. That's, that, it's a large building to be made of metal, you know what I mean? That has, that gives an entirely different look.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna...
It'll be nice, I'll have stone on the front, I'll do, I was a contractor for years, I did a lot of work.
Okay.
IBM for years, Poughkeepsie and East Fishkill.
Metal buildings are classified separately, so...
There are renderings, so...
Oh, okay.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, this is the one we need, is, why are the doors so high?
Oh, I'm not going to do the doors that high, I don't, we don't like the commercial...
Well, okay, because the doors are going to be like 12 feet high.
That was the rendering they gave me, and they made, I want to go 10 wide, but I only want to go nine high, or 10 by 10.
Okay, so you're going to have a standard garage door to this, not...
Then I'm going to have 45s on the corner, you know, on Dutch corners, they call it.
Okay.
It's not on that floor plan they gave me, but...
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want a commercial look.
Right, that's what, that's what we have to be